Big smile. Hey, what's up? It's your boy Elf Seven. That's right. And as you know, I'm interviewing every single person running for every different position here in New York City. And I have one of our esteemed candidates running right here. I'm gonna let her introduce herself. So what's up? Say what's up to our folks.
Hey, everybody. How are you? This is Ruth McDanes and I'm coming to you live from Harlem, District Nine. That's where I'll be running for. And I'm ready for this.
Awesome. So yeah, it's a quite exciting time, you know, for the council. There's a lot of potential changes and things that are coming up. So I'm just gonna ask you real quick, what's your background in activism?
My background in activism? I mean, I guess as a black woman, my background is long. It's been since I was born that way. And everything is a fight. Yeah, everything is a fight. And everything is something that, I'm a mother of five, I'm a widow. So activism began once I got here, you know?
Yeah. So activism, are there any maybe political things that you fought for recently or, you know, maybe that you could?
Well, you know, my platform is reentry, returning citizens, because my community has been plagued with incarcerations for decades. And as it stands, we all know that poor quality schools exist in District Five and in District Three. Those are the Harlem districts, Board of Education districts. And historically, they've been the worst. They've been the worst in the city, slightly under Brooklyn. And we know for a fact that poor education perpetuates poverty. And poverty perpetuates incarceration. So now, when we live in a society that has over 2 million people incarcerated, we don't speak to that number. That makes us complicit. My community has incarceration through and through. They say 1 in 3 households are affected. 1 in 3. 1 in 3. And those are the numbers that they want to give us.
That number sounds low to me, honestly.
There you go. And I'm glad you said that. 1 in 3. And see, yeah, I don't wanna, I'm sorry to interrupt you with that. Whatever you know that they're giving you, you know it's more than that. I live in a building with 10 apartments. And I can go, there are 2 apartments on a floor. And I can go from the 5th floor down. And I know on the 5th floor, both households have been affected. 4th floor, both households have been affected. 3rd floor, both households have been affected. And the 2nd floor, 1 household. The 1st floor, I don't know. But I know that it's more than 1 in 3. And always remember, author pays for the data, controls the numbers. They don't want us to know the truth.
Yep. So look, from all your, like, I get it. You know what I mean? I've been there. I've been, you know? I'm not proud or ashamed to say that I've been on welfare, food stamps, I've been on all that, you know what I mean? I've been homeless, you know what I mean? And I've been all that. So in some ways, you know, I learned a lot during that time. And so through all your fights, I get that, yeah. But, you know, just even sometimes getting those access to those services or being treated like as a human being, you know what I mean? It's a struggle, you know what I mean? But out of all the things that you've done, what have you found to be the most productive? Maybe other people are also like fighting a similar battle to you, you know what I mean? What have you found like to work out the best for you to get things done?
Just being on the ground and interacting with people and getting them to understand that, you know what, tomorrow's gonna be a better day. Or it might not look like it. We can't stop fighting. I mean, like, I've been, I've been on food stamps, I've been on welfare. I won't not welfare, but I've gotten one shot bills and it's, and been gainfully employed. Been gainfully employed for the city of New York. How they say, the working poor? That's crazy. That's crazy. And have had to resort to those things. And I mean, you can go on with how you feel about it, but that's just the reality. That's how the system is geared, to keep you constantly on your knees. It's never for you to stand. And we gotta speak out about that. I mean, I've helped people on, on different levels and different arenas. I mean, I don't, I don't wanna call any names because, you know, nonprofits or business, nonprofits, they get a problem. They got problems. And it's sad, because as a nonprofit and you're helping them, they can't even pick you up for the help you do, because it might jeopardize their funding. And that's a sense of control. That's what, that's what the government does. Almost with the churches, the faith-based initiatives. They can't, unless they're gonna get something, they can't really take you to the masses. They're limited in how they push you out there. So I'm apprehensive of even saying, the people who I have helped, but I do my work in my community on a regular. And that's, that's my greatest reward.
Yeah, I've struggled with bureaucracy as well. Everybody struggles with that bureaucracy, you know what I mean? Yeah.
It's discouraging. I have an organization called Breaking the Chains of Your Mind. It was, it's a reentry. We've been in a hiatus since COVID, because I couldn't bring people out to meet.
Much respect. That's not an easy program to run. I respect that, you know what I mean? I'm, I work with that homeless community. And yeah, we basically see a lot of, you know, a lot of people, the prison system, jail system, you know what I mean? And we know that, you know, it's a very similar struggle, you know what I mean? People coming back in. And actually, there's a lot of like, like here, I'll give you an example. So the thing is that I recently was coming in from Newburgh, because Newburgh has, has one of the second highest murder rate, I think, in the state. Actually, for a while, they have a huge environmental problem. So this is what they do, right? Affordable housing generally sounds good, right? Yeah. But here's the hustle about how they kind of like warp it into some weird way. Now, all the luxury high-rise buildings, they gotta have affordable housing too. So you go to that, you know, nice posh place in Manhattan, there's affordable housing there. But when you take people from affordable housing, they need to fill those slots. So what happens is the people from the jails, do you think they send them to those posh neighborhood districts in Manhattan? Or no, right? Certain people go there. So even that affordable housing is setting up its own classist racist problems, you know, infrastructures and pushing those further. You mean, and then all the, you go to Newburgh, it's crack everywhere, you know what I mean? And that's where they end up. How do you expect those people to make it? You know what I mean? They already got a huge burden. And then you're putting them into those communities? You're hurting those communities and those people who are coming out of the jails trying to make it, you know what I mean? And you're putting them into highly, you know, toxic environments with, you know, what are you doing? You know what I mean? These people are still human beings, you know what I mean? What, for real?
Well, you know, the reality is that if we as a society helps that demographic, because they're the lowest on the wrong. On that ladder, they're the lowest wrong.
Yeah.
We will help everybody else.
I'm all about that.
Yeah, we will help the seniors. We will help retiring people. We will help single mothers. The average person coming out of incarceration makes at least $20,000, if not less, a year. And I look at my children. My children have degrees. One is still in college. And they have jobs. One of them is making like $27 an hour, but she can't even get even 25 hours a week. So how good is that? So I mean, there are ways in which they manipulate the system and it's affordable. We can't change our median income. That median income is ridiculous. How, how do you say in District Nine, that the average income should be 88,000? Have you lost your mind? 88,000? 45,000 is a high note. 45,000 per individual is a high note. The median income has to come lower. If it comes lower, that means even, I have friends who have retired, who can't even move out of their apartments. They live in walk-up buildings. They got hip replacements and all other stuff. They can't even afford to move. And these are people who've retired with decent pensions.
I just, I just met this-
Where are they gonna go?
I just met this beautiful girl in the projects, you know what I mean? And guess what, you know, she was trying to qualify for an apartment, but guess how much she's getting, how much she's making as her, as her income right now? $17,000 a year.
That's crazy, right? Where can you go?
What?
And they talk about the home-
She's doing like healthcare. She, she working for the healthcare system. And they paying her 17 Gs a year. She's taking like calls on the phone for them.
And she's, and she's working hard. She's working hard.
She was. She was. Yeah, she was.
She's grinding. She's grinding.
Making somebody else rich. It's ridiculous.
She's grinding.
And I'm sorry to say this, you know, I really should be impartial in these things, but just to let you know, right, Ruth, because I kind of feel for you a lot, you know what I mean? The thing is that, look, you know, people that from the bottom like us, you know what I mean? We might push you out of the way to get what we need done, but honestly, we will always listen to you, because we are always shut out. People never have time to listen to our problems. So someone like Ruth, someone like myself, maybe it seems impartial, maybe I'm playing, you know what I mean? But people like us who have been on the bottom, we have been not heard before, and we are the most likely to listen to you. So I just wanna put that out there for a second, yeah. So thanks for, you know, taking care of that community. I know how difficult it's take care of that community.
It's, it's hard, because they don't even, they, they're so numb from not being heard, they don't even know when to jump on board. It's like I'm beating a dead horse.
Try to get, try to get a place to rent. I'd like to open up an office. Oh, what's your office gonna do? Take care of reentry? Oh, I'm sorry. Well, you can't have that kind of a business here. You know what I mean? How, all-
Well, you know what? It wasn't hard for me to get-
Nice.
No, somebody had given me space. I was able to get space. And I was meeting twice a week.
Sometimes you're blessed. Take it.
Well, and that came from me just grinding in my community and them knowing, like, no, I'm about my work. I'm about that work. And I did see that the relationship changed when I said I was gonna run, because now people looking. And I'm like, clearly, you know, we gotta change some laws. I mean, everybody keeps saying they sold out Harlem. Who sold out Harlem? Say the damn names. You know what they did. And you know that it's still in place. And if you keep voting for them, you're complicit. And I'm like, all bets are off. I don't have no alliance to anybody right now, because if we're not eating, if my neighbors aren't eating, what the hell are we doing? What the hell? It's gotta be bigger than me and my house. And I mean, I say that to everybody. If all you can do is you and your house, then you ain't doing enough. Because that's a medium expectation. There's other things out there.
That's a great segue to actually, one of the questions on the, on the list right here, which is corruption is a known problem in New York City. Also in New York State, you know, like in Albany, people just know it's corrupt, yeah? What is your grasp of the level of corruption in, you know, in this area? I told you, talk about naming names, that was pretty badass, yeah? There's been a couple candidates who've done that. Victoria did that, yeah? And how will you take it on? How are you going to like rip the corruption out by the throat that's killing us?
Well, you know what? I don't even know, I don't know what level that begins on. I just see people and I know that there's injustices. And I don't know what the perks are. And it, but like, I'm retired. I, I know this is not a job for me. This is not a job. My, my thing is to make sure that these young people, I got a host of young people. I got 5 kids. They gotta have something. And they gotta get on board. It can't be me. It's like, I keep telling them, this ain't about me. I don't need this. I don't need this. I can move anywhere down south I want and get a house and chill for the rest of my life. This is about you all getting up there, getting, getting put into the narrative, because they didn't like your land. Everybody can't live in the Bronx and in Brooklyn. That's bizarre. Nor should you have to. You mean these busy Lee Harlemites didn't put you into the narrative? How dare they? How dare they? How dare they? And I keep saying to them, like, if you're a realtor or homeowner, you're not me. Because you're about development. You're about stretching your paper. You're not anybody in here. You're not anybody in these blocks. Nobody in these blocks. So different, even to our gated communities, like the dumb bar in the Savoy. Their mindset is not the same thing as those people happening in Ninjas. They're not in the blocks. The blocks have a totally different narrative.
They already pulled this before with the Native Americans. Don't fall for it, you know what I mean? They're trying to say that whatever they have is worth, for some reason, what they have is worth so much more than what you have. Their culture is worth so much more. Their money is worth so much more. Their whatever is worth so much more. It's not worth more than us.
Drinking on reservations.
We deserve to be here too.
Indians are drinking on reservations. Their alcohol, their rate of alcoholism is sad. But you know what? I'm not an Indian. There's no reservation for me. There's no reservation for me.
The hood kind of is a reservation, almost, you know what I mean?
Where is that?
You know what I mean? It's kind of where they put all, all the poor people in, you know what I mean? That they try to collect us in there, you know what I mean?
Where is that? Where is that? Really, they don't have that? There's no, there's no real place. When you get put on a reservation, it's land that you can call your own.
Ah, yeah, that's true. That's true. That's interesting. Yeah, that's true.
Where is that? They ain't not giving us that.
Yo, they selling the hood. They selling it. You know about Rad, right? They're selling the projects.
Listen, the project's been solved. I'm still looking at Jay-Z, like, why you haven't gotten Marcia yet? You a billionaire.
Damn.
I'm, I'm still looking at him. I'm still looking at me gloving the death of their music, who buying chains. Get them chains off and go buy some blocks in Philly.
Harlem, better call up Cameron. Get myself out.
Listen, Cameron, he's not eating like them. He's not eating like them. But it's not even just Cameron. Everybody in the music industry has used Harlem as a backdrop in some way or another. And they have not given back to what Harlem is to this day. This was the Black Mecca. This still is the Black Mecca. I just posted this morning that, um-
Call for it.
Abercynia, Abercynia Church is gonna host Cicely Tyson's funeral. And I said, look at black America. We always, we always draw a crowd. They built a Whole Foods. Why am I gonna pay $17 for some cucumber juice? What do I need cucumber juice for? You know? It, it, it's, people don't come to Harlem to go to Victoria's Secrets. They don't come to Harlem to go, they come to see us. They come to get our vibe. They come to hear our music. That's how it's always been. And you wanna displace us? How dare you? How dare you?
Don't let it happen. Don't fall for it. Don't let it-
I'm pushing back. No, I'm not. I'm pushing back. I'm pushing back. Whatever it looks like, however it may be, I'm pushing back. And I'm urging and I'm begging people, tune in.
Eric Adams also has a strong position on that. I think he's pretty cool. We might be able to find a way to maybe link people that feel similarly together into some kind of powerful organization. You know what I mean?
Well, I know Eric Adams. I've met him. He's coming to my home. And, um-
Oh, cool. I like him.
Yeah, I, I like him too. I wanna hear, I, I wanna hear what he has to say.
He's one that's been holding on this interview process, yeah? There's a lot of other people coming up, you know what I mean? But I like Eric Adams. He needs to come on this interview, yeah?
I believe so. And I'm just like this, I think that-
I know he's the current Brooklyn Borough President, so it's hard for him to come out to these things, you know what I mean? But yeah.
No, it's a phone call. This is all this is. I'm not making excuses, because see, when you wanna get people's attention, you gotta seize the moment at every opportunity. You have to say, I'm busy. You owe it to these people. You owe it to these communities. You saying you wanna represent a community? Let me tell you what this is about. I read one of your questions, and it says, what does city council look for like for me? And for me, city council position is a nonverbal contract. It's a nonverbal contract. Did you say to your constituents, I'll get you all the resources and I'm gonna get you everything you need to make this the best district in the world? How about that? So when he says he wants to be mayor, he's got to say he's gonna take the position to make this the best city. And you're not gonna take any bribes, because that's gonna hinder it from being that.
Yeah.
And that's for everybody. That's not him. That's for everybody across the board. Either you're gonna make it the best or you're not.
Yeah, but Eric has suffered to take on corruption, as have I. And I tell you that I love to rip the guts out of corruption. You know, that's one of, one of the reasons why I do this. I'm on a fucking hunt.
You, you on a hunt? I hear that. I hear that. And you know what? And that's what happens when you've been dealt the injustice and you have to take a stand. Hence the reason why I'm here now, because I'm like, you know what? I could show you better than I could tell you. We not doing this. We not doing this. I, I don't know what, what end is for me. I just can't sit quietly by. That I know. That I know. It's game face time.
I'm very similar to myself, yeah? So-
Loaded up.
One of the questions that people have for a leader is they wanna ask, how does that leader make decisions? So when you make decisions, what, is there a process or, you know, like, how do you, you know, certain information sources, like, how do you choose? How do you make your decisions?
Well, it depends on what kind of decisions I'm making. Some, some decisions have to be made in the moment. And you gotta go with your gut. And there's some decisions, like the questions I said, I wish I could have looked at them further. I could have, you know, come to the table with more information. But as it stands, it is what it is. You make the decision based on what the scenario is and what information do you know. And if you don't know enough, then you ask for somebody and you find out what needs to be done. And most of all, you involve the people. What's going on? What's this like? I mean, I'm tired. I'm, I'm really tired of people making decisions for me in my community. Like, we have to have a say. And that's why I tell, I tell these people in my blocks, like, pay attention. We, we, we're voting on district attorney. Like, pay attention. They're gonna be on somebody's petition. They making deals right now with clubs. When those people, when your friend comes to you and says, sign my petition, read your petition, see who they got up there. See their names. It might be somebody you don't want up there. Don't sign that dead one petition. Yeah, because see, people carried them to the gate. People carried Cy Vance. Cy Vance didn't exist up there. It was on petitions. And we gotta be aware of that. He came with judges. They coming with judges and everything right now. And I'm just like, I just want my community to understand, like, it's time for you all to wake up. Wake up and get engaged in this. Like, don't be so docile. Don't be so caught up on your weave and your nails and your, and your, and your thims and your sneakers. Stay woke in this. You talking about Trump. That's on a national level. I'm talking about locally. They got us from below.
You know, that's actually-
That's what they doing.
That's actually a focus that a lot of true activists really realize, that while people around them are screaming about Trump, who's on a national level, right? Yeah, he very much has the very impact on our very real local lives that are going on. And you can actually affect things locally so much more. But it's easy to point at a victim, it's easy to point at enemy who's far away and say, you know, you're bold. But you know, to point at an enemy who's nearby, who could actually do something to you, that takes real bravery. So I respect that, you know, your willingness to call out people from, from the get of this interview, you know what I mean? And saying that, you know, you have no problems. And that's, when you are someone who has, who has been, you know, at the bottom, what happens is that you have to learn to use every possible resource to further that agenda. That's why I asked about activism in the beginning, right? So being an activist is great, because you have to learn, even when the system tries to say no, you have to force it to say yes. So you can make things happen. And that's obvious from, you know, from the way that you approach things, which is cool. My next question, I don't mean to lead you on, right, but-
Lead me here to, this is your show.
Out of all the candidates that are running for this particular position, what makes you the best candidate? Why you?
I feel I'm the best candidate, because I have, I have the most concern for every individual. This is not for the lowest of the low. We've got to help the lowest of the low. Other people are targeting specific arenas. Not only are they targeting specific demographics, they're not even targeting a demographic that meets the needs of our community.
Do you know the names of anybody who's running against you currently right now?
I know all the names. You sound crazy. I think about it every week.
So who's the worst one?
William Allen, Chiba, Christie Darden, Christie something, and, um, uh, William Castle.
Who's the most like corporate one? Who's the one that we gotta really watch out for? Is there one like that?
Well, you know what? They gotta do their homework. And that's what I talk about. I, I, I don't want people to just vote for me. I want you to look, Google them, look at their websites, check their track record, and see what they bringing to the table. Because I'm like this, if you a district leader, get out of my face. Because you've been sitting at the gate how long? And if we looking like this, you was a part of the damn problem. How about that? You was down with OPP. You sat there. So now, after you sat there, why should I make you higher? Why should I make you oppress me and my community more?
Those are some great questions.
That's what drill to me. And then when you got new people, people are looking for jobs. A job? This is bigger than a job. You wanna pay increase? You wanna control the real estate? I don't think so. And I don't come back to the community. If you're not making it easier for your people, and I mean, all your people, from the weakest to the strongest, then you gaming. You gaming.
So what are, what are your plans for the future? What's coming up? You got like some, maybe, I know it's tough to have like campaign events and stuff. You got a website dropping, I don't know. What's up?
I give out food every 2 weeks. I give food out every 2 weeks, because I know people have to eat. And food is hard to come by. And, um, I don't know. Um, I've been giving out blankets. God put in my heart to give out blankets. I bought these little MyLor blankets, you know, the runner blankets? Because it's cold. And like, every day I get up, I'm like, ah, I'm so blessed, like, it's warm in here. It's warm. I got lights. I got a lot of things. And like, people don't have that. They brought up the truck. Salvation Army has, gives out food. They brought up the truck. I can't even understand why. They gave food out all year long. They gave food out, and they not only gave food out to everybody every day, they had a, um, what was it? Samaritan Purse. Come and set up a station where people, homeless people could come wash up and take a shower and get their clothes-
I've done actually several events with Salvation Army. I've worked with them actually, not only here in the United States, but also in Grenada. And they, I know that they're one of the groups that actually does really give out the food, you know what I mean?
They give out the food?
Right across where you at, you know what I mean? Yeah, I love-
But they give showers. They washed the people's clothes and gave them showers. And you understand what, yeah, that's what we gotta do.
I'm one of them people, yeah.
I respect that. I made a donation to Samaritan. Well, I always gave to them, but I knew when I saw that, I had to give more, because that's real.
I'm an independent operator, but I just, I do work with them occasionally, yeah, and I do like them. And I am of that. And people who are from the streets, like yourself, right, yeah? So many people from jail, prison, they, how can they get a job? You put them out there, you expect them to get back into society with nothing?
How can you get a job when you have nowhere to live? How can you get a job, you don't have Maslow's theory?
Yeah, people wanna give their kids, right, with no records, a college education, all this stuff to put them onto the workforce. You take this person with, with that on the, and you give them nothing? And you just throw them on the street? What, what do you think's gonna happen, you know? Seriously. It's, it's a horrible joke, yeah?
It's disgusting. Maslow's theory, hierarchy of needs. If your basic needs aren't met, you can't achieve anything. If you don't have a place to lay your head down and sleep, you can't do anything. Sleep deprivation will kill you. How do you expect people to make?
Yo, honestly, we're gonna have, yeah. You're super awesome to talk to. I love your energy and your passion. Actually, as, as time goes on, I have other candidates that I'm speaking to from different places that I, that I also like. And I'm putting them together, and we're gonna have like maybe pound discussions on certain topics. You know what I mean? And then we can get to, maybe we can even network. The thing is that because of the term limits, right? The, the majority of council seats will flip. So the opportunity to make new policy changes is bigger than ever before. If we walk in already with a plan to make something happen, we can create something larger than ourselves. So I'm gonna patch you into all the people that I'm talking to, because I think you're real cool. And, you know, hopefully y'all can get along. We'll see how it works out.
Well, let me put a plug in. Let me put a plug in for Mr. Levy, because I'm helping, I'm pushing this for, um, Fair Chance Housing. That's a necessary entity. And he's been pushing it, and I'm trying to help him with this. He's out in Brooklyn. But it's a real, it eliminates the background checks for returning citizens to get apartments. Because as it stands, landlords can look at people's backgrounds. And I'm like this, I'm gonna just be real, I don't give a goddamn if I rob a bank. If I rob a bank and I pay my dues, I still have a right to have somewhere to live. One thing has nothing to do with the other. You have to have, you have a right to have somewhere to live. If you, if you paid your dues to society and done your time, they can't look at you and say, no, I don't want you in my building, you know? Um, 10 years ago, you stole something from Macy's. You're lucky. We gotta stop doing that. It only happens to people of color. Everything for us is to damnation. White America is not affected by that, as we can see in Trump land. All his homies walked on. Right now, the chick went to the judge and said, listen, I have tickets to go to Mexico. After you done ran up in State Avenue, you still think you should go on vacation? And the judge let her. And the judge let her. So we have to be a part of how we deal with our criminal justice, as well, as, as well as being a part of how we come back into society. Because everybody has to be forgiven. The word of God said, all are extended and fall short. So now, what's that? If he's, if God said it, why are we picking and choosing?
Yeah. And you know what?
Everybody messes up.
And just, you know, as one more thing, I just wanna add, the fact that she's worked in reentry and has been a mother and has been on, you know, food stamps and stuff like that. She's touched the system in so many different ways. The thing is that when I talk to some different candidates and stuff like that, I'd be like, yo, what do you know about welfare? And they have no, absolutely zero contact information experience with it whatsoever. How are you gonna fix a problem if you've never dealt with it or even been, you know what I mean? Like, some of them seem to have great ideas, that's cool. But, you know, if you've never experienced it, like, it's, it's different. Like, and you see how the positive way to other people, that, that the books won't tell you, that the professors don't tell you. You think the professor, you know what I mean, that's never been there knows? Uh, no. Okay, I'll tell you right now, they don't know. Okay, that's why they're screwing everything up. That's why almost half the health professionals in this country don't even wanna take the vaccine, because they just don't trust in the system. Because they know there's a lot of enabling and bull crap, even amongst themselves, you know what I mean? Even amongst themselves.
Amongst themselves. Well, I'm a parent of a returning citizen. My, my, I have a child who came home from incarceration, or becoming home. I mean, like, I, I know what that looks like. And that's what I said, I don't know, I don't know about anybody else, but I'm the kind of parent, but then we gonna change some laws. Because at the end of the day, I didn't have no children to bring here to fail. They've got to succeed. And they succeed, and everybody else would have to succeed. We gotta level up. It's time for that.
Have, okay, have you heard of someone named Julian Assange?
No.
No? Oh, he's actually a very, he's a guy who actually, have you heard of Wicked? No? Oh, he's actually very, uh, he's a guy who actually, um, uh, have you heard of WikiLeaks?
Yeah, I've heard of WikiLeaks. Oh, is he the one who gave up information and they, they extradited him?
Uh, well, they're trying to extradite him. They did not extradite him because actually, right, here's, it's hilarious, right, yeah? The British judge who refused to extradite Assange into the United States said that United States prisons are too inhumane. England said that, our ally said, sorry, US, your prisons are too inhumane. We're not gonna send Assange over there. That's how bad our prisons are, for real. Yeah, anyways, yeah, so, um, the thing is.
You say that because England was the catalyst for slavery.
It's not a good look.
My family is from the West Indies.
Uh, the thing is that, you know, um, he's being held, you know, to this day in prison. Because he said some things that are inconvenient to, uh, you know, some people in power. And, uh, I, I would like to try to get some support from all the city council members. They could just say they support Julian Assange. If, you know, it, it is what it is, but.
Look at, let, let me look at them because I don't wanna, I, 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 I don't, um.
I have another question I wanna ask you. What about UBI? Do you support UBI? A universal basic income?
Yeah, I do.
Oh, that's cool.
I think that would let, yeah, I think that would level the playing field.
Yeah. Um, so there's, yeah, there's cer, and just so you know, there's other questions and, uh, that I'm asking of all the different candidates, right? I like your passion and your ideas. So hit me up if you're like, yo, this is something I wanna broadcast out to all the other candidates right here, like. I wanna ask them how they feel about reentry. I wanna ask them how they feel about corruption or something like that. Um, you know, this is. And we will find ways to push things into conversation, you know what I mean? And together we will, uh, we will call, network and we will have panel discussions. And we're gonna keep pushing this. I'm on a mission here.
Well, you know what? I'm glad you said that because as I stated, I don't know where I am in this campaign, babe. But I'm just, if, if I don't do anything but make them have those conversations, yeah, we're gonna make them have those conversations. Because you can't, you can't be comfortable anymore. Get your ass buckle up because we wanna talk to this. We have to talk to this because my community is, is begging for this.
My audience right now is, is, is dying laughing because they know that what you're saying is exactly how I am. Like, when these two get together. They know it's mad problems. They know problems is coming. Yeah, we ain't stopping. So. What's up? I know everyone on the channel that, that, you know, I only have five hundred subscribers right now, but a lot of the people watch it. I know y'all loving it because this is exactly my style. You know what I mean? Um, so, what's up? Yeah, you know Morse comments. So how can people follow you? How can people support your campaign, all this other thing?
I have Instagram and I have Twitter and I have Facebook. You know, these are all things that I had to get in. I've never had anything.
Below, but I want, you know, if you wanna mention any of them like of particular importance right now, let, let us know.
Well, next week, like I said, I mean, if you have a need, we're dropping food at Lincoln. And we drop it every Friday and not every other Friday. At one, one, I'm sorry. We're going to once a month at Lincoln. Um, come by and get a bag of food. It's not this Friday because they expecting a blizzard following Friday.
Oh, what, where in Lincoln?
Lincoln, we, right by the management office.
Okay, what, what, um, what, um?
That's from twelve to two.
I can be there at that time, but I, I'll say I come out to things on Saturday. I'm, I do things with, uh, my local Hungry Monk. I don't know if you heard about them.
I heard about them, but it's not Saturday. It's a Friday. It's Friday.
Yeah, I don't know if I could make that one. I, I, I already have a commitment at that time, but. We'll work on something, yeah? I, I come out to the events, I support, and also I will collect more press for that. Yeah, we'll put it all together. We'll make it awesome, yeah?
We are our brothers keeper. It's a ma, it's a mandate. It, it's bigger than, it's bigger than just running for city council. You can do things right where you are. I mean, city council is the way that we change the legislation. We create legislation and we make sure we bring the resources into the community. And, and that's what I'm about. But we can do the work anyway. We have to do the work. And that's why I say, I, I, I require that my audience look at all the candidates. Don't just look at Ruth McDaniel's. You have an obligation to make sure you get the best for you. And if my conversation doesn't meet your conversation. You don't be looking at me. Because I'm for a specific audience. I'm about people getting leveled up. So now if you're not thinking about leveling anybody else up, he herself, I'm not the candidate.
I'm gonna say right now, you know what I mean, because I'm definitely in the hood and I know how it casts in the hood be, you know what I mean? They be like, yo, I'm about my business. You know what I mean? I'm not messing around with none of that politics stuff. Dude, I gotta tell you for a moment, yeah, it is your business. You know what I mean? It's affecting. Your, your friends getting locked up, that is your business. It's taking money out your pocket, you know what I mean? They taking you out your neighborhood, they raising your rent, they kicking you out. That is your business. They, they messing you up, you know what I mean? So just trying to look out like a poor brother, you know what I mean? That's all. Not trying to tell you how to live your life, but just saying. Could use some.
How to live your life. I'm definitely trying to tell them how they live their life. Because, no, I tell them. I say, they get mad. Because I'm like, you, you walking around here trying to act like you oblivious. They dropped indictments in, in Harlem like it's all right. It's all right. Cy Vance called it a hundred and twenty young men out of Grant Project five years ago.
When, when, when they fall, we'll be there, you know what I mean? But I'll be there. I'm there for the bombs. When they, when they realize they messed up, right now they chasing the, with the TV selling them. You know what I mean? They, they chasing what they think. They chasing what they think is hot, you know what I mean?
I think they're just trying to numb the pain. I think they're trying to numb the pain. I think that's why they stay inebriated. Glammed up. They don't wanna face the reality.
I smoke all the time. It's a dark day in our nation when high-level authorities. Will seek to use every method to silence dissent. The truth must be told. And if you want the truth, you need to check out independent media producers just like myself, DJ L seven. You should subscribe and hit the bell icon to get notifications when I release a new video. We are all the major platforms. That includes Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and of course YouTube. Unfortunately, we have definitely seen that these mainstream outlets will cave to corporate interests. So we encourage you to join our independently moderated communities of Reddit and Discord. We also encourage you to subscribe to us on BitChute and Daily Motion so you can see the content that YouTube doesn't want us to let you see. Hey, now it's time for the most important part of the video. That's right. It's time for us to tell you about the Taking Action Group. Do you need an activist? Or maybe there's no activists around willing to help with your cause and you need to learn to become an activist? That's exactly why we're here. Every week, we get up with people from across the nation. In fact, even sometimes internationally. And we develop strategies and a game plan to address the issues that are affecting all of us. Every week, myself from New York City and of course my co-host Lisa from Los Angeles provide a close-to-close perspective on what's going on in the country. If you want to donate to help out with expenses, travel, equipment, you know, stuff like that, then I definitely appreciate it. And you could hit us off at Venmo or PayPal. Thanks a lot. Hey, by the way, we also have a merch store, so check it out. Oh my goodness, it seems like you've reached the end of the video. So make sure you check out some of our other videos, uh, make sure you subscribe. This is your last chance to do so, so thanks a lot. And looking forward to seeing you on the next one. Hope you guys enjoy it. Please comment below if you have any questions or issues you'd like me to address. And if you're an activist, the time to make things happen is now.